Good evening and welcome to Fort Mitchell City Council. I'm Mayor Jude Eamon. Today is July the fourteenth, hard to believe, 2025. Welcome to our council here. To my right is our city administrator Edwin King.
Good evening.
His right is our city clerk Amy Dunbar.
Good evening.
And my left is our city attorney Olivia Amlong. Amy, would you do a roll?
Mr. Arlenhouse?
Here.
Ms. Berger?
Here.
Mr. Dethridge?
Here.
Mr. Dietrich?
Here.
Ms. Knockhaisel?
Here.
Mr. Polgiers?
Here.
Dr. Rooding?
Here.
Counselor, you see the agenda for today this evening?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Mr. Polgiers?
A second.
Second, Dr. Rooding. Any questions?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Counsel, for whatever reason, the minutes were not attached to your email and sent. You do have a copy of them. We do not have to take a vote on those tonight if you're not prepared to. But if you had a chance to read those, I do apologize for not being attached. Make a motion to approve, Ms. Knockhaisel?
Second.
Second, Ms. Berger. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Alright, motion carries. Next on our agenda, you know, there's people that help cities or there's other elected officials that will be described as friends of the city. And I will believe, believe me, this gentleman's more than a friend of the city. I assure you that not only does he answer his phone, he shows up, he volunteers. We can agree or disagree, and he's amazing. And I couldn't be more proud of this county and what he's done. But Judge Knocaman would like to come and speak with us tonight. But I appreciate everything you do for the city of Fort Mitchell, Judge.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and I'll give you my $20. So thanks for giving me a few minutes just to update you on what's going on in the county. Not much of this you're aware of, but hopefully you can take a few points away. But, you know, your comment, Mayor, I think that, I know most of you on the council very well, and just want to say, you know, the best thing about New York, Kentucky and Kent County is the fact that government really does work well. And you think about the efficiency, it's the great service that you all provide. And so we're always here to serve you, not to get in the way, but here to work with you in any way possible. And so a lot of things are really run through. And we know that the community, when education, education's important, public safety's important, roads are important. And, you know, there's so many items that I could talk about, but a few of the highlights I'll cover. Most of it's very good news. One of which I want to point out, I just want to say thank you, by the way, for having the best parade in New York, Kentucky, actually. You know, I know everybody, the amount of work you all put into it, the staff, the thankless, everybody sweating to death, you know, how much we appreciate it, just so you know that. Those of us who don't live in the city, but get to participate, just know how much it's appreciated by everyone, by everyone out there.
Just curious, did you think there was enough candy given out? There was not enough candy, and I think there was more than enough candy.
The problem is, who wants to be the one who doesn't come with enough? That's the problem.
Exactly.
You know, I kept it all in Peachwood. We kept it to the very end of Peachwood this time.
We did too.
Still went home with some of the boxes of it, so. And then my wife said, really? We spent that much on candy this year?
Excellent question, Ken.
Thank you.
She pays the bills. The other note, just a couple of things, jumping onto the public safety side of things. I think you're very well aware of our consolidated dispatch operation. Worked great with the chief and, well, the chiefs and the entire staff. But just a little bit of data on that, we did join the Code Red, which you guys are great about having on your website. We appreciate that. The mass notification system that's up and running, probably underutilized. So we do really appreciate you all encouraging your residents to register and get online for Code Red. It does offer a nice ability to, for communication. And then really, the one that really supports two main points, and we point out to those of you who may not be aware, is that our dispatch system, which is really, I would tell you, it's really one of the best in the country to support your first responders, that was upgraded in 2018. And we, our goal is, by the way, not to totally break the news, but our goal is, and my goal for years has been, to have the same CAD system across all three counties. You all have, you have to deal with the Expressway, with Dixie, the benefits of that, but also the downside of costing for public safety. And we just feel like between that and the radio system, if that can be something that you all as a tool don't have to worry about, they have the best technology, the best resources to help public safety is always where I feel about. And you've got a great police department, the county police department is here to support you. But we know that you have daily challenges, and we want to make sure technology is not one of them. And so hopefully down the road, we'll see that Boone Campbell have the same dispatch software. To that end, you may or may not be aware, but it's part of the regional dispatch operation, that the MDTs, the computers that are in your first responding vehicles, is part of that package. So you don't have to worry about it on your budget, that's part of it that gets replaced when they're up for renewal. And it isn't a case where you're debating whether we can get another year out of them or not. It's part of the system, the IT folks know what's ready, they're getting replaced, and that's done on a regular basis. Little data point on the support system. And if you ever have not been out to the dispatch operation to just see what goes on behind the scenes, feel free to reach out to Ashley Hawkes, our director. The chief can obviously get you out there as well. But the great work that's being done, so we've got about 23,000 calls, and Fort Mitchell's about 11% of those calls on an annual basis. What does that mean to you? And those are the small calls, the big calls, but you've got a highly trained team that is running out there and supporting it. As you can imagine with police and fire, the dispatch operation, you have to be a special person to work there, and you have to be properly compensated, so you want to continue working there, right? And so those are things we're continuing to add, make sure we're supporting that team to do the service that will support you all. Jumping also to the public safety, the detention center, it is the biggest budget of the county, by the way. We, right before COVID, we were getting up to about 900 inmates on a regular basis. We're now back to about 600. Why? Arrests are still occurring, there's still a lot of criminals, we want to make sure we're locked up. But the jailer's really been doing a great job to make sure that we work with judges, so to make sure that those who are locked up should be locked up, and those who need to be out getting either treatment or getting to work, making sure they're paying taxes, their child support, all those things are working. And whether it be ankle monitors or what have you, those are, we're really managing that on a daily basis to make sure that we don't raise the budget, but also keep the community safe and support you all's arrests. Fort Mitchell, by the way, if you wanted to know, wanted to know where you fall in that category. 158 arrests in 2024, which is about eighth in the county. So, you know, we want to make sure that data, we want to make sure that we support our police departments, but we also have to just be, know we've got a place to put them, and we'll build bigger jails if we need them. But right now, the good news is the jail is properly sized for what Kent County needs. As I alluded to, the police department, our police department continues to support you all. Sadly, we do have a very good operation in terms of the InRed Crimes Against Children team. That is a regional and our countywide service that we support the cities to make sure that we get those perpetrators off the streets. And unfortunately, that is continuing to be a horrific crime that is perpetrated every single day. We're there to support the city. And as you all know, Steve Hasley and his team at the Homeland Security Emerging Management continues to be a great resource and is paid for by the county. And I think you know, and the chiefs know, that Steve's there to help you all whenever necessary, big and small events, he continues to be an amazing public servant in Kent County and a great friend and resource for all of us. Some of, a few other notes, Nick knows this, but Public Works are always there to help your team, one of which is the roadways restriping program, which we try and do anything we can. We buy it countywide, sometimes regionally, and allow cities just to automatically tie into one of our contracts. When Nick was there, one of the things we did was every contract we signed with a subcontractor says, the city can buy off that contract, no matter what it is. Sometimes it's a deal, sometimes it isn't. And sometimes if we just do things together, it's efficient across the board. Those are examples that we want to, we will continue to look for opportunities to reduce costs and make sure it's more efficient. Take the burden off your teams' backs so they can do other things to serve residents. A big area that we take for granted sometimes is the animal control team. We have a new director there, by the way, Kelly Sauer, who's been, her predecessors have done a great job. But Kelly stepped in. Really, we're trying to reduce the ratio of the animals, get increased, make sure that we increase adoptions, primarily dogs and cats, record numbers. But we want to make sure that, Joe Schreiber's calling, make sure I didn't screw something up this evening. It's his birthday, by the way, so we wish him a happy birthday. But that, the effort there, Animal Services, we call it, that we want to make sure animals are there, are released, are treated, they're spayed, neutered, released. But we want to make sure that you know that we're there, always reaching to have the highest level of service. And I bring this to your attention this evening because what I look at is that that's the closest retail operation we have at the county is Animal Services. The number of people who call, the number of people who are adopting animals, et cetera, that facility is just amazing, and they continue to do good work. And so when you have a chance to come down and visit and adopt an animal. Wrapping up, a few big things, you all know this, our support will continue, as the mayor said, but on the Ormsby Project and the St. Elizabeth redevelopment of Drumm Ridge, state money that we were able to obtain have been able to be used for redevelopment. And you know, in that case, the sewer investment, those are the things that just need to be done together. Out there, state, county, cities, if we don't work together, try and figure out how to bring resources to the fore, we miss out, and this is a resource that we've been able to reinvest in the community. We have redevelopment funds still available, so if you all have ideas, and some of your neighbors will see Covington or Oringard have had some projects that have been reinvested in Independence, and we want to see that. So if you, it's tough to make some of these decisions, but some of these buildings in our community that need to be torn down, reinvested in, it's tough to have the city invest in them, but we want to be a partner to do that. And lastly, in that, in the financial area of investing, is our, we have a $13 million fund that we've been working on site readiness. It's not as quite of a project for Fort Mitchell, but we're all Kent Countyans, and we know we want to have projects that have high-paying jobs and allow people to invest in their companies and grow in the community. That is one area that we're continuing to do, whether it be, we've looked at, where can we find sites that if someone wants to have a business needing a couple hundred thousand square feet, bring 300 employees, what do they got? Well, we're working on that stuff on your behalf, what does that do? It hopefully reduces the tax burden, increases community wealth and community vitality by having the businesses here, and we're working on that every day. And some of the, one of the most exciting projects that we have coming up is the new Kent County Park. So we will, if you, if you want to look at our website, there's some preliminary designs there. You'll see some heavy-duty work there over the next three to six months. What does that look like? The old Fox Run Golf Course, as we know, is now just trails. It will be totally revamped, it's going to be a real draw and to, for the entire region, but more importantly, to Kent County residents. Will not be duplicative to anything that exists or is planned, for example, the work in Earlinger. And I don't have to tell you all, parks are expensive, but it's a huge, you know, community asset when we do it right. You all have just finished yours, which I think is a phenomenal project. Property values stay higher, the families stay healthier if they're joining these parks. And we're going to, we will have an unprecedented investment in the old Fox Run Park, which you'll see over the next couple of years. So that's going to be a long-term project. We've hired a owner's rep to walk us through that. We've got teams who've, in fact, one member of the team even has a long history of working blank. So there's a lot of creative things. So how do you make sure it's not, you know, we all love baseball fields and soccer fields, but how do you do it so we can bring families together, organizations together, get out and spend time and just get moving and off our cell phones, right? So that's something to look forward to. And we are very involved in the upcoming announcements or upcoming opening of, one of which is the one in KY Center of the county, adding some financing enhancements to that project to make sure that gets off the ground down in Covington. That project, if you want to have a chance to walk through it, the region owns it. So the Port Authority is a partner, and they will own that asset forever. Number two is the opening of Spark House to support entrepreneurship and businesses at Seventh and Madison. Again, the community will own, it does own that asset. $17 million project that will open up with less than a couple hundred thousand dollars in debt to allow for it to support business growth and vitality of the community. And then the big project we're also working on is that partnering again with the state is to bring UK School of Medicine to Covington and to put a new Chase School in Covington as well. So you'll be hearing more over the coming weeks about which spot that'll go to and that whole effort to bring the Education Corps to the Urban Corps of Covington and to support everybody else that, we, obviously, education's critical. If we can have a higher level of education, higher education really foothold in Kent County above and beyond Thomas More, we'd love to do that, and we're going to, you'll see a great project come out of that as well. With that, I've taken too much time, I'll be quiet if you have any questions, but really appreciate your service, and we're always here to help you in any way possible, so.
Any questions for the judge?
No Zingers at all?
No Zingers. No, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Thanks for coming, Chris.
Next on our agenda is citizens and guests. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to city council tonight?
Go ahead, Mr. Kaiser. I wasn't going to.
That's alright.
I don't know if you could, I use archives of the thirty-five Virginia Department. Don't know if you can put on a website, or next time there's a hard copy, because in the spring, I've had, I've had one of Mr. Polgiers' neighbor come to my house three times looking for his cat. He has an outdoor cat with a chip in it. There's such thing as an, on Virginia, that he has an outdoor cat. And they were complaining about the gray cat from, from, Greg's a neighbor, is there every evening.
Yeah.
Because they've got a female cat, so.
That would've been a perfect question for the judge. But the county obviously has animal control.
Yeah, like I told them, I said, we've had problems four or five years. You have feral cats and stuff. I said, we really need to figure out a way to train. And it's a sweet cat, the yellow cat. And the gray cat just runs away, but it's just, it's going to get. We've been down that road before.
Reminding people that there's leash flaws, not just for dogs.
Not just for dogs.
Yeah.
That's all I had.
So practical. I mean, cats want to be outside at night. They just do. But the county does have a program for feral cats. You call them in, they'll, they'll spay and neuter them. They just release them, but.
Yeah. But we had the, I'm on the back with little ones.
Yeah.
And that was sad, because.
I agree.
You couldn't get near them. They were, they would run like crazy.
Yeah.
Gary Farrell.
Olivia, thank you.
Okay, first up on the city.
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't think you, yeah, come on up, Mr. Hens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for council giving me this opportunity. I'd like to share with you a traffic problem I am toward, was involved in the other day. I was exiting from the, I call it the Home Depot Shopping Center, and I got behind an eighteen-wheeler, a semi. He was coming down Clock Tower Way, where it's a four-way intersection. He didn't know which way to go. He went to the right, which means he came across a railroad track, came up there on Pleasant Ridge, hit the stop sign, hit the street sign, didn't knock him down, but he had him wiggling. There was no sign saying which way to go once you exit Clock Tower Way. All it needs is a sign pointing to the left. This poor guy, and then he had to come up Pleasant Ridge. You go up Pleasant Ridge with a semi, that's an experience. I mean, there's only parking on one side of the road. If you're going toward Dixie Highway, it's yours responsible to duck in behind cars. Well, we're ducking in behind cars with an eighteen-wheeler is going to be an experience. Can't someone put a sign up there, a arrow pointing to the left as you exit?
I, so I believe we had Mr. Tewis, because we had another complaint. The unfortunate part is that intersection's not Fort Mitchell. And so that is Crescent Springs.
Okay, but you all know someone in Crescent Springs. Is there a problem?
We have, we have gone to them, you know, one, one thing that this council did pass, because two meetings ago, we made to where it's public, and that therefore, any of these apps, such as Google or any of those, Pleasant Ridge, Birdsall, are no longer through, considered through streets in doing it. And that doesn't mean they, they won't do it.
That's right.
But I know that we did, we're not allowed to put any type of sign up there. And Nick, I don't know if you had any.
Give me the sign, I will put it there.
I believe you.
If for some reason the fire truck's coming down, I'm thinking to an emergency, like, oh my God, he's not going to get through, the truck's not going to get through. Why can't we put a single sign up pointing to the left?
Could we put something outside of Fountain Place that would be angled?
You could probably put something at Grandview, in say, Grandview Seventy-Five. I mean, that might be something that you could put up.
You mean his development, Fountain Place is like off Lakeside, like on Butter?
Oh, oh, I'm thinking, Fort Mitchell Place.
Fort Mitchell Place.
Fort Mitchell Place.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if the sign's placed correctly, you should be able to read it as you're coming up at that light.
Well, you can all practice going down there and say to myself, which way do I turn to get to High Seventy-One? And there's no one to say. And that poor guy, I don't know where he was from, but he did not want to go up there. I mean, Royal Drive was supposed, he couldn't make that exit, because of the construction there.
And this has, we've had this discussion before, but even coming into Fort Mitchell, say if you're coming across the railroad tracks there at Grandview, could we put a sign to, to turn them right up Grandview to the, back towards Butter?
Back towards Butter Milk.
At the Grandview. Grandview and Beachwood, we probably could put something there.
That way they don't get under the overpass and into the small streets.
Well, can we do something?
Mr. Hens, you give me, you give us all kind, I'm, I'm excited to report that from the last time we picked up the garbage, we've got, we've got the park board.
I want to thank you for that.
We got the park board looking at bocce ball courts, so we, we, we listen.
I'm doing this for the benefit of the community, not for me.
It's for the kids.
But you know, you say it's Crescent Springs' problem, but the guy's going through Fort Mitchell.
I know. We just can't put a sign on Crescent Springs.
To your point, that's my bigger concern, is a, is a semi coming up Pleasant Ridge. And as far as the ordinance, the semis aren't even allowed to come up Pleasant Ridge, correct? So maybe we can even do a no, no-through-truck sign or something.
Yeah, no-through-truck.
There is a sign saying no-through-trucks. It's halfway down the hill after he makes a turn. I'm thinking, what good is that?
Yeah.
It should be up further, but one of these days it's going to happen.
Sure.
Mark my word, unless you get a sign out there. I'm going to ask you another question, if I may. I know you all have honored someone at the Fourth of July Parade, and I think that's a great thing the city does, very, very popular. Is it strictly for people who live in Fort Mitchell, or families, or do you consider adjoining communities?
We, we consider anybody that has made an impact to Fort Mitchell.
Okay, that's fair enough. I know it's a little advanced, but thank you for the time.
We're always looking for names.
Thank you, sir.
Well, with that, somebody made a request for two thousand and twenty-eight.
Oh, two thousand and twenty-eight.
Because it's Lewin Monument's eighty, so mark that down.
Joe, you're on that, right?
So we actually.
Mark it in your calendar.
For next year, so, yeah, it's a few years now.
Right. Anyone else wish to address council? All right. Okay, now for real. It's your turn. Yes.
All right. First up on the city attorney's report, we have a second reading of ordinance two thousand and twenty-five dash oh five adopted with case sale for the period of July one, two thousand and twenty-five to June thirty, two thousand and twenty-six.
Counsel, this is a second reading.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Ms. Berger?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Polgiers. And this is an ordinance, so Amy, would you do a roll?
Ms. Berger?
Yes.
Mr. Polgiers?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Arlinghouse?
Yes.
Mr. Dietrich?
Yes.
Mr. Dathridge?
Yes.
Dr. Roding?
Yes.
Ms. Knockhazel?
Yes.
All right, motion carries.
All right, next up, we also have another second reading of ordinance two thousand and twenty-five dash oh six, amending chapter thirty-five Fort Mitchell Code of Ordinances relating to Fire Department Volunteer Situations.
Counsel, this also is a second reading. Our chief is not here, but I know he was able to ask, answer some questions. Edwin, I can know.
I can answer if you have any, but it's pretty straightforward. It's just aligning the pay periods with, when the checks are actually tracked with the snacking period.
I make a motion to approve.
Ms. Knockhazel?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Dietrich. Any questions? All right, Amy, would you do a roll?
Ms. Knockhazel?
Yes.
Mr. Dietrich?
Yes.
Mr. Arlinghouse?
Yes.
Ms. Berger?
Yes.
Mr. Dathridge?
Yes.
Dr. Roding?
Yes.
Mr. Polgiers?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Yes.
And next up, we have a first reading, so no motion is required. First reading of ordinance two thousand and twenty-five dash oh seven, amending chapter seventy-two Fort Mitchell Code of Ordinances relating to parking regulations.
Yeah, so we've received a few complaints from residents, people parking in front of their driveways. And our, our ordinance basically, our existing ordinance basically says that you can't park in front of someone's driveway. But other cities, they put a few more stipulations on that. So we defined what that meant, and we put a guideline of the requirement of two feet, so someone can't park within two feet of someone's driveway. If they're within that, that buffer, then they can't be towed. So there was some question as to what is, is too close to the, to the driveway, based on some complaints that we received. So this just clearly defines how far away someone can park in front of the driveway. We brought the Public Safety Committee to look at, and we're bringing it forward, you know.
This is a first reading. Any questions for Edwin, or? Okay.
Next up, we have a, okay, next up is a municipal order, two thousand and twenty-five dash oh five, authorizing the purchase of real property located at two fifty-one Grandview Drive.
Counsel, if you remember, we went into executive session, you authorized me to go into some formal communication with, with the family that owns, some of the elders are here tonight. We were able to negotiate a price, and based upon you approving this, and our intentions, I want to go to the, the family. They've been a family for the city for a long, long time, and they know the intentions. To be clear, that the city would go to purchase this, you know, we, we would be tearing, tearing the homestead down that they, they lived in and they called home for many years. One of the things that they did ask, if the council would consider, remembering, you know, Mrs. Oler and Oler family by doing something special for them once we would, we would elect to develop it. My plans for, I don't have any plans for, for that. Could be an expansion for the park area, you know, that future councils and future mayors could, could make. There's a lot of ideas out there, from whether it's a community center, to whether we're, we're just, it's green space, but God doesn't make green space anymore, and I think this is a great opportunity. But I wanted to at least invite the elders if they wanted to say anything tonight. If you don't want to, I understand, but, but they're an amazing family. I remember knocking on their door as a young council member to, to ask for their vote, and she, I don't know what question it was, but it wasn't easy, and I didn't have an answer. But, you know, the family's been, been a staple in Fort Mitchell for a long, long time. So I wanted to share that before we would vote, or if you had questions with that.
I know this is something that we also did over in Pleasant Park.
Right.
Quite a few years back, when the home next to that park became available. Logistically, it does make sense that the city would acquire that property. So thank you to the old.
Any other questions?
I just think this is a good opportunity for the city, and I appreciate the family working with us on that. So with that being said, I'll make the motion to approve.
Mr. Polgiers?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Arlinghouse. Is there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? All right, motion carries.
Last up on the city attorney's report, we have a first reading of ordinance two thousand and twenty-five dash oh eight, amending the budget for fiscal year ending June thirty twenty twenty-six.
So now that you passed authorization to proceed to purchase that, in this amendment of the budget is not just asking price. So, you know, we will, we'll have to go through a Phase One of Phase Two, you know, of that home. In the past, we've always given the opportunity for our Fire Department, our Police Department to actually train. You know, this gives them a great opportunity for training. It would be something that I eventually would, would tear down, probably in the late fall, you know, or in the winter time, allowing them for access to do that. But this here amends that budget for allowing clearing and also allowing the demolition of this. And again, this would be just the first reading, but you've authorized me at this point to go forward with the elders, and then we need them in the budget. Any questions? Love you, thank you. To the old family, again, thank you very much. Under the mayor's report, really just what amazing parade. I will say that we had, it's, it's one of my favorite times of the year, and I know Joe will be discussing this, but each year just seems like it's so family, it's friendly, it's so many people come out. So I really appreciate everybody's hard work, from all the department heads, you know, every, every police officer comes in, whether they work night shift or day shift, every Public Works, you know, member. And Joe, you do a lot being up there. Edwin comes in. So thank you for everybody. Another city administration report?
Just a couple of things. Tonight is my last meeting until I report for a Coast Guard Officer school. So I'll be gone at the next council meeting, but I will be back at the August twenty-fifth council meeting. But that being said, I'm, I'm leaving on Sunday this week. So if you need me after that, I'm not going to be able to respond to you ever.
I still my checks just before.
But feel free to reach out to the department heads if you have any questions for residents or anything like that. So I appreciate always your, your support.
I'm going to be sitting in Edwin's, you know, office, and he said, don't screw anything up. I don't know, you made me feel bad.
Yeah, good luck, Edwin.
He runs the city. He does a good job.
But I mention that because in the next year, it's probably going to be in the August eleventh meeting, but perhaps the August twenty-fifth meeting, we'll probably be bringing a, an ordinance to vacate Royal Drive. If you'll remember, we kind of talked about this at some point, we're going to have to vacate that. The developer's going through the process with the state right now, KYTC. But when we vacate that, we're basically going to have to basically give it to the developer, and then we'll get right away back with the new Royal Drive ones that's completed. So, but anyway, that ordinance will be coming in front of you probably long, long. And if that's the case, then Jim Parsons, who's our attorney working on that particular issue, he's going to be here answering the questions you might have.
Edwin, that's covered right now under that executive order, is that right?
That's correct, yeah. It's, it's closed under executive order currently, and once you all officially vacate that, then it will, we'll convey that land over to the developer, and then the developer finishes the, the Royal Drive, that'll convey that back to us. They haven't consented to convey that back to us because they don't get paid until they do, so.
We asked them, when is it going to be finished? And they keep saying by the end of this year. I'll still go on record and say, I don't believe them.
One thing we've always done in the past with new subdivisions, things like that, is making sure that the developer does build those streets up to the city standards before we take them over. Just make sure we keep that in mind.
We will, and we will be inspecting those.
The development agreement says they can't receive a penny until that is done, so.
Just like to dot our i's and cross our t's.
Yep. Any questions for Edwin?
No, thank you. Good luck.
Comments from council? No? All right. Department head report, Amy, you said you didn't have anything?
Not.
Chief Nader, you don't have anything? Joe, do you have anything?
Turner?
Turner Tewis? Nick, you, you have anything?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second, Dr. Roding, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.